I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Official caller meeting order, we'll start with a low call. Mr. Powell?
Here.
Nina Lowery?
Here.
Jeff Upton, Barry G. Camp, Ron Morton?
Here.
John Collins?
Here.
Peter Hungate?
Here.
Don Rollins?
Here.
Joe Toward?
Here.
City attorneys here, Christie's sitting in for our show. So first item of my business is to adopt our agenda as it was made, are there any changes that need to be made? Motion to approve of this. Motion second, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, sign. Motion carries. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes from May eighth.
Actually June twelve.
Anne, you could've said something before I read.
Sorry.
Anybody like to change our agenda to June twelve? Alright, are there any, are there any changes to the minutes from our June twelfth meeting? No, we have a motion to approve of this. Motion in second, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries. Alright, next is our public forum. Looks like everybody here has been to a public forum before, but we allow two minutes per speaker to address the council with any questions, concerns, comments, addable ways that you may have. Anyone? Yes ma'am.
Anne Upton, I just wanted to say I went to the Fourth of July celebration and it was wonderful, so Westport did an awesome job once again at celebrating the Fourth and everybody enjoyed it and I got lots of thank yous and told how awesome we were when we were passing out food and it's just a good thing to, good event to have, so try to be part of it.
Anyone else? Alright, we'll close the public forum, move into our business reports, first we have the planning commission, Walter?
Evening. Not a whole lot. So first, it's mostly ongoing business for the most, our conditional uses we were looking at recently and it looks like it needs to be some updating just on the procedure and just what qualifies for granting one and that's what hopefully we'll be discussing amongst ourselves at this next coming meeting. Same with zoning, we only have three residential's, one commercial, and then two industrial. Yeah, we were thinking that possibly we should have some more, more variety, just maybe a second commercial type or something else. So that again, hopefully maybe some proposals here in the future. And we still have two openings, if anybody knows of anybody that would like to serve their community, we need some people, a couple of them. That's, that's about it, all I've got, if you might have any questions?
Questions for Walter? So Walter, while you're here, I would like to encourage members of city council to attend planning commission meetings while they are...
Doing such.
Yeah, while they're, while they're reviewing their go books and their ordinances, if anybody can make that, that'd be great. Currently it's just me telling them what I think.
Yeah.
That's not a lot of, a lot of direction for those guys, so I know they would be encouraged if you guys...
It would be helpful, we're, we're pretty green. Thank you much.
Thanks. Alright, Anne, you want to give us the economic unification committee?
Economic development, unification committee didn't have a meeting this last month. But Jennifer did send me an email and she said that the candidate forum will be in October, the location and time still yet to be determined, I guess last year they had two forums, this year they're just gonna have one. And then the Tree City will be given a tree giveaway sometime in the fall. And then the next meeting will be this, coming up Tuesday at six thirty right here, and then the memorial committee meeting will be following that at seven o'clock. So, anybody wants to come?
Any questions for Anne? Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
I would encourage you guys to show up to the economic unification committee as well. Alright, next John, give us the library report.
Well, we're at it, if you want to attend a library board meeting, we're at it one later this month, Tuesday twenty-fourth, Tuesday night, they're always very exciting. We always have plenty to discuss, at least, we have people who like to talk a lot, so. I have a pretty brief report, just our summer reading is going well, we're, we're in a, we're sort of in the downward swing at this point, we've got one more meeting on Monday and then we have Tommy terrific magic show on Wednesday, July twenty-fifth, we're hoping to get a lot of people from the community for that, it's, it'll be very entertaining for kids, really, kids and adults, so we hope to get, heavily advertise that when it gets close, it's getting close, so we hope to get a good turnout for that. And then we're finally ready to hire a children's librarian, and we had, we had been depending on the county for, you know, our children's programs and their librarian, we traveled around, and we're on our own now, and so we've been kind of trying to piece things together, we were lucky to get a really experienced librarian to do the summer reading, but she's already committed to Mountainburg Library, so, so anyway, we'll have that job description, we're trying to take applications through July thirty-first for that position, so we'll have to get that going, hopefully get some good applications, so. And we're very busy, so we're, it's amazing, people just keep coming to the library.
The staff are way up this month.
Yeah, yeah, summer's a busy time, there's just a lot of families coming in and, you know, it seems like it's been busy, I don't, I mean, I wish we had a patron counter when we, you know, I think it would reflect well on how busy we are, but anyway, when we get into our new building, we'll definitely have that, so we've got to show that.
Any questions for John? We were often going to use this meeting as a budget meeting, so Christie's highlighted any line items in the budget that are over fifty percent, we're about halfway through, so as these department heads come up, they've all been, they've all been told to expect questions on there.
Should we advertise that position on the marquee? I mean, I had no potential application, so...
Well, this is, we really just started, yeah. Y'all are the first to hear of this, so I wanted to, so saving it for you, so. We'll be, we've got Susan McTown posting things on all the Facebook pages that people follow and, and we will, let's see, you know, we've got our website and the paper classified, apparently it's very expensive, I don't know if we'll get enough bang for our buck for that, so we'll, we'll go that way, see, see what's an application we get first. If, you know, if you don't get good applications, we'll, we'll do that.
Anything else for John? John, we already talked about your budget, book purchases are...
Yeah, I got twelve hundred dollars to spend for the rest of the year, so.
The rest, the rest of your line items are in good shape for the most part, building maintenance is out of budget, and I think that's where you were doing cleaning out of that, so.
Right, right, that's true.
Alright, anything else for John? Alright, thank you sir.
Thank you.
Miss Palada?
Do I have to start with an apology?
That's not a good way to start.
I was looking over my report and I've made a hatch up this month, just like you had May on yours, I have June on mine where it should be May. And then I didn't carry any of my totals over to year-to-date, so next month I promise I'll do a better job for you. But now, money-wise, it all looks good. Just I can't add this month, I apologize. We're still up from where we were this point last year, not quite as high as we were last month, but we didn't have all the parking tickets this month that we had last month, but they're all coming to court this month, so they'll all be paying, the other half that hasn't paid will pay this month, so that's about it. I think when you have one clerk out because of a death in the family and another clerk's on vacation, it gets interesting around the office. No, and I have switched clerks, part-time clerk has switched on me. Cindy was doing fantastic job, everybody knows she does a good job. Her old job offered her a part-time position, if she would come back, they would pay her twice what I was paying her, so she left, which I don't blame her. She didn't stay, you know, the glory that we have here, I understand, and the variety most of the time, but she did go back to the co-op and Mary Norman stepped in. Mary worked at the county as warrants clerk for about fifteen years and she did almost a year at Elton Springs as their clerk, court clerk, so she's got some experience and she stepped in and she's doing a great job.
Good choice.
But she went to Vegas this week, so, you know, there you go. Give her four days on the job and she takes a vacation.
It's hard to argue, you know?
It is, it really is. Just get them all to come to work on, on the same day would be great. Yeah, it is a good choice, she's doing a really good job. Anybody have any questions for me? I'll be back next month when approved.
Anne, you want to say, we haven't talked about your budget yet.
Do I have one? Do I have a budget?
Any questions on Paulina's budget? So you got one line item that's, that's over the fifty percent mark, that's your computer consultant?
Oh yeah, it's, it's always over. Doesn't look good for the future, you know, we changed, we didn't change. I, I was forced into a change on emails.
Yes, it's for the better, though.
Yeah, you couldn't have convinced me that last week when I didn't have computers for two days. Okay, don't blame my budget on that, okay, I didn't have computers for two days and we're trying to get ready for court, so it was exciting in my office, I had no stress level at all, so.
Anything else for that?
I'll try not to break anything, how's that? Thank you.
Thank you. So if you guys looked at the budgets this, this month, I don't think we got one or two that are not out of budget for the month. It's been a rough month.
Alright, we had four hundred and eighteen service calls, which is much higher than any other month, as you can see on our little map that we made. Thirty-two reports taken, hundred and forty-nine citations, I added Greenland, we wrote twenty-eight in Greenland this month, that's something I haven't been adding in, so our numbers would be higher than what they appear. We had twenty criminal violations with, with fifteen of those being drug-related, five DWI's, public intox, twenty-seven ordinance violations, seventy warrants, and two felony and eleven misdemeanor arrests. Poor Langton just got back from being out of hospital and decided he would be active and go write some parking tickets. We have had complaints everywhere we've rode. We are not writing parking tickets to the whole city. I know that blew up on Facebook, that's not something that we're doing, that was explained to the people when I talked to each and every one of them, explained to them what we were doing and why. We've had two instances where it's just about caused fights, physical fights over the parking situations, so if they call us, we have to go, and you know, it's a double-edged sword, if we don't do anything, we get the response of, you didn't take any action, so we'll, we'll handle it ourselves. If we write the ticket, then they blow up on Facebook, so, kind of feel sorry for Chris, but at some point we'll, we'll probably have to revisit that as a city and decide what we want to do, what we want to allow, what we don't want to allow, and go from there.
And Christie has pulled some, some other city ordinances on parking for us to look at.
What?
And as, and I was just gonna say, as the chief reviews those, I'm sure we'll use some of those and bring them into Westport.
What concerns me on some of the streets, some of the streets at nighttime, we literally could not get a fire truck through there if we had to, they're parked in line on both sides of the street. That, that is a hazard, that's gonna create a big problem, if not now, then later, so we just need to look at that.
Questions for the chief? Any budget questions for the chief? How's everything at Park?
Quiet this month compared to last month, the waters...
Water's down.
The water's down and people aren't coming as much, been a lot better. A lot better. Anybody got a pump?
With John's fuel expenses, we'll have a budget.
Keith, I want to point out on his, because he and I sat down and got to looking, because he's twenty-one thousand, shows that he's twenty-one thousand over budget, so we sat down and, to look at it and see where that came from. And his sales tax allocation, that should be at fifty percent, is only at forty percent, so I haven't been giving him the right amount every month that I, that I do, so that'll correct itself over time.
Okay.
So technically, if he had been getting what he was supposed to, that he would be...
On the fuel expense, what I didn't figure in last year, I didn't know how quickly we'd go to twenty-four hour coverage, we're out on that street, anywhere from twenty-four to twenty-eight hours a week more now than we were. We have very active officers, we're, we're doing a lot more, but they're running up and down the road a lot more, so I think that's where that fuel expense is coming from, it's just more time on the street and not less time taking call. Well, gas prices went up a little bit.
I don't like to interject, just hit that nowhere, but on parking, I've been through this in several places several times, chief. I've had situations where we put ads in the paper and sent out literally a flyer, saying please come to a meeting on parking, we did three of them over three months, nobody showed up. Right. The moment they changed the ordinance, first thing that got written, that person came in with a pitchfork, torch. Right. And it's a thing you just cannot get people to respond to, and so maybe at the public forum, you know, candidate forum in October, maybe you can grab some time and say, here's what the city looks like on a map, here's where we have problems. You've got to face this, because if you don't tell them beforehand, one, they may have creative solutions about where they can put cars, but... Right. You're gonna have to go to one side of the street, not the other, where you can't protect the fire apparatus, so... Right. That's just, has to be done, and picking that side is hard, you know, do you pick the side with mailboxes or not, you, you know, where do you put the signs and... Right. And all that, it's a, it's a tough, it's almost as bad as pets. Like if we decide to date the ban pitfalls, we'd be filled up next month. Oh absolutely. But it's, it's, for some reason, people will not, can't get them to worry about it until it's over, and you can look at ordinances and decide, hey, it's a great solution, if you implement it though, they're right back in here and you're doing all this. And they're right back to, yeah. You've got to get them in here first and try to get those particular streets that are problematic to kind of buy in.
Any other questions for John? So I have one other thing, I got Chief Nelson's grades this month, his class, and this will be a lot more fun, but he actually scored As in every class that he took, so congratulations, John. The, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
I would say I have a really smart guy sitting next to me.
But Northwestern, so they sent out a letter to me, just explaining what John went through, giving me some more detail on it, it showed the grades, the classes he took, they even, they recommended that he write one more paper to, to tell me more about the class itself, but I did want to read just a little bit of this, just so you guys, I know Sheriff Elder was here last month, but this course was to help prepare John for improved service to the community, so, so that he will be better prepared to make recommendations to us and those that he comes in contact with through his duties, but improved service to the community, organizational improvements, management concepts, he goes on to talk about the amount of budgeting, organizational behavior, leadership, human resources, so it was a, it was a very comprehensive course. Can't be happier when, when your chief goes off to something like that and you wind up finding out that, you know, at all A's and everybody's, so that's great work, John.
Well, thank you, and I want to thank you guys for supporting me and letting me take it, because if it wouldn't have been for that money, we'd never had that in the budget, so I want to thank you guys for that.
Also want to commend all of y'all on your parking and your traffic control after.
That was amazing.
Y'all had that laid out very well and it's plugged very good.
I think we had pretty good work with the fire department, and I think those towns made all the difference, one-way traffic, each-way, got...
Been out there and done that, y'all had that.
I think that was great.
Did a good job of that.
Thanks chief.
Let's close the block. Isaac? Isaac, you look like you're in a bad mood.
I'm tired today, tired.
Worried about your budget?
Yeah, because mine's got lines all through it. Water loss was, it's still over twenty percent, so I think our water, the water we're buying is up quite a bit. And just a heads up, next month it's gonna be worse than that, so we've had a couple of blowouts and we've got two more waiting on us to fix, so. Our longer-waited flow monitor is in and installed, so hopefully we'll start getting some rain and collecting data on that and start trying to find some more of our holes in our sewer system. Well, let Nick come up and give you a report on the sewer water, we, we put twenty more Badger meters in and ten more encoders, so that brings us up to like ninety meters, I believe, for, for that, and we still have forty-seven Metrons out there, so we, hundred and forty roughly of cellular red meters, so, so that number's continuing to go up. And then, and our next, next thing, we're trying to get rid of some meters that have rolled over a million gallons, and we've got several of those, so, and we're trying to take some unoccupied meters that don't have very many gallons on them and switch them out with those ones that are over a million, so, so we'll start that fairly quickly. We did do a six hundred-plus foot main extension on Cemetery Road to get water on up there to that end property, I think they're trying to sell it, the, the owner paid for it, we installed it, so we got that in, we're trying to get that sampled, we're working on FEMA project right now down here on McKnight Street, we got everything tore up down there. Streets, I don't know if anybody's got to drive the new asphalt on James Place or on Cedar, it looks, it looks awesome, they did a great job, we got them paid, they come in under budget, I think their bid was fifty-six nine, I think it was fifty-three eight that we, that we paid, so they come in under budget. That was partly due to Nick, he, he figured some of the tonnage and figured it long so that, that we would come in like that. Other than that, the sidewalks, we're still waiting on the state for Robinson, we have got approval for the Main Street sidewalk, when we get the money, we can get started, so, and that may, that may be starting next year after, after the new budget, so. Asset Medical, is that, is that what that's called? I don't know if y'all noticed, they got their footers dug, they're, they're rolling on that, they're, they're gonna have block layers here Thursday and they're throwing that up, so that's, that's coming quickly. Still haven't heard anything out of the co-op, I know they, I've worked on some easement stuff for them over there for a sewer vein, they're still under contract for the land, I think it's going through, but, but they kind of went silent for the most part on us, but I assume they're still working on that. One thing I do want to talk about is the recycle center and the problems that we have there. Usually on Monday mornings, it is a disaster down there with people throwing out anything from vacuum cleaners to lawn cushions, lawn chair cushions, to packing peanuts, we've found everything down there. I, I've talked with Jeff about maybe putting surveillance up down there to maybe try to help some of that, I hadn't had a chance to get to talk to you again, mayor, after I talked to Jeff. So, so we need to do something, something down there to help, because we was turned into about like Chad's Park down there, it's... Monday, Monday morning is cleanup time down there at the recycle center, so it's, we put signs up and they still throw their plastic bags out and it's just a... We don't have anybody working there on Saturday, I mean, I guess we could get some volunteers maybe to come down and, and sit with it on Saturday, but, but I, I would really like to, I would really like to close it on Saturday and just keep it open five days a week.
And you're not, you're not experiencing any dumping through the week, correct?
No, no, of course, of course, me and the, and my guys and Chad, we're all in and out of there throughout the day, so, so we don't get, we don't get people just coming in there and dumping all the time through the week. We do get several folks in there throughout the week doing their recycling, so, so maybe weekday only might be, might be an option where we can help curb some of that.
Was it, did you have this dumping problem when we had a hired person down there that was on Saturdays?
No and yes, that's a complicated question. She took everything from motor oil to... Yeah, electronics that we were having to pay, we'd have to pay to get rid of the electronics, and the bags, we have to pay to get rid of the bags, the plastic bags, so she was just taking anything and everything. And, and the metal, she'd take metal, we had a metal dumpster there that she'd take metal that we was constantly in there fishing out headboards and stuff that couldn't go to the, the dump or go to the recycle place for metal. So it was still, we still had a lot of man-hours down there even when it was manned on Saturday by some, by a paid employee. We were constantly having to take TVs and stuff to the county and, and stuff like that, so we've done away with, well, with, with the person and taking the electronics and the plastic bags, and we've gotten rid of the metal dumpster and all that, and we're taking just the basic recycles, which is plastics and, and paper and glass, because we don't have city, the city recycling don't do glass, so, so it is nice to have a place to go with your glass. So, but no, to answer your question, we still, it was still troublesome then. It, it stayed a lot cleaner, but we still, she took, she took so much stuff that we still, we still had a lot of time invested in, in getting that stuff away.
I know, whenever she was doing that, she would kind of, at times organize volunteers, is that going on in any way on Saturdays?
That faded out a year or so ago, well, people got tired of it.
Which is why Lori was warning, that's part of the reason she was wanting to go.
Yeah.
Because there's not like a environmental club at the school anymore, and I just think people got burned out.
Yeah. So...
Did you, were you able to get any numbers on...
I hadn't got them yet, no. I will, I'll try to get them to you.
So we, the last time we pulled numbers from the recycle center, we didn't see any, any drop in it from when we picked up curbside recycling. Isaac doesn't think that there's been any, any drop since either, which kind of leads me to believe that most of the people using the recycle center are probably out in county, which is, I mean, it's still a great service, you know, that we're providing, but... Oh yeah, well, it costs us money, as a matter of fact, Isaac just was, was told that he needed to replace brake lights and tires and some other stuff on, on one of our trailers.
Yeah.
You know, that Boston Mountains, they're making us do it, we still had fuel, if you look at Isaac's budget, we had fuel, running, running trailers. We still have fuel, if you look at Isaac's budget, we have fuel, running, running trailers over there. So, yeah, we're, we're out a considerable amount of money and, and that stuff, it's not selling anymore. And to be perfectly honest, most of it's going straight to the landfill. Most of the recycling is, is shut down right now, China quit taking all the recyclables, and so most of it is, is going to the landfill. Now, I don't think we should close our, our thing, but, but I'm, I would be willing to try closing it on a Saturday and just seeing if, if there's a marked production, if, if people start to you know, uh, let us know about it, uh.
I know, uh, i- if we take something over there, especially like newspaper, if it has glass bottles in it or something like that, they dump it all out on the floor and then they scoop it up and put it in dumpster, they don't, they don't have the manpower to sit there and sort all this stuff out, so if it's not, if it's not sorted on the trailer correctly, it, it goes to the landfill, it goes into a roll-off dumpster and they haul it away, so. So, I do know that, a- and if the newspaper's wet, I don't, they said that they can't recycle it then, I, I don't know how that works, but seems like wet newspaper recycle just like dry newspaper, but. Yeah. That's all I have. If y'all want to start on my budget.
You have it in front of you?
I do. Yeah.
So, I think the streets is the first one to come to Brian.
The equipment lease, uh, we did redo our lease and get a new backhoe and we got extended hours because, well, part, part of the reason our lease is up so much is because we were over our hours and over showers are expensive. So, we, we got another lease and, and extended our hours a little bit, and that's why we're out a li- a little on that one. Put that line item above it, the equipment, that is gonna fall in and, and take care of that, so. And materials, well, outside of, outside of a big flood, we have to get a bunch of gravel in here, we shouldn't, that one shouldn't move much. Some of that was, some of that went to James Place. A little of that went to James Place, some of, most of it went to Cedar, we had a couple loads of gravel that we took to Cedar. Can't remember, what's the road you live on, Anita? Elkins, Elkins, we put several loads up there because the bottom fell out of it after one of the rains. So, so we've had some. Yeah. Sidewalk, that sidewalk line, uh, that was mostly engineering for the Main Street sidewalk is where that, that came to pay Burns and McDonald for the engineering part. Uniforms I asked Christie about, we're not, I think that's, uh, we had to pay something.
We had to pay a little bit to get out of our Centos contract.
Yeah.
And our monthly fees with the university we use now are considerably lower, so those probably will end themselves out.
Christie, what about the outside services and the paving?
We've actually received, uh, money back from projects in the past, um, from our McNabb Street project. I have to help me remember what else we got money back from, uh.
Mainly the, the outside services mainly from the McNabb Street reimbursement.
And we basically just put on that line item because we're gonna have to turn around and use that for more engineering.
That's, that's nearly all, uh, some of that went to, to move the power poles down there, we paid for that, out of that, and, and the rest of that's gonna be engineering for the Robinson sidewalk, so.
And the paving is what you were talking about with it coming in under budget?
Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, you know, three thousand dollars over the budget. So, we budgeted fifty thousand, that's three thousand over, so.
Any other questions, Brian? Do you want some water while I'm here? Isaac just going by him like, everybody else kind of tried to ignore him, sleep, sleep away, Isaac's like, let's just do it.
Yeah.
What's the, is the outside services there, is that, uh, from cleaning? On water?
Uh, no, that went to, uh, can't remember where that went to. Some of that, some of that went to our pump station repair that we did up there. And I think we might pay some of our skate out of that as well. The dues, I don't have just a great deal of control over that, we are, uh, we are not gonna renew our membership with the Arkansas Rural Water Association. We, we pay them nearly eight hundred dollars a year, and when I called them to come do some TV in on sewer, they were way more expensive than any contractor that I called, so. They do not provide service to us very well, so, so we're gonna cancel that membership, so.
What about the bank service charge?
Those are fees that we receive for credit card usage and pay now usage.
And office supplies?
Office supply.
Office supply, that's all I know.
You have a big office, huh?
Yeah. It is a big office. That one was so bad, well, the uniforms is the same down here, so.
You guys do switch to a different company?
Yeah, uniforms. They seem to be working out pretty well.
Any other questions, Isaac?
I'm gonna let Nick give you an update on sewer update.
Sewer update, um, I think, let's, let's start with just the rehab work. Next month we'll do our final twelve-month warranty inspection. I know we probably won't find any extra stuff from Alaska around, but we'll get Davis out one last time to fix anything, unless any paintless street cuts, Northwood and had a sprinkler issue over at, uh, Arbest that they went ahead and took care of and we sent them the bill and they said they would, they'd pay it graciously, so. We'll see if there's any other, any other items there and we'll get that addressed and get that part of the contract closed out there. We have officially, last month, we, we paid out RJN and finished out the loan, so it's, it zeroed out. On the extension of Fayetteville, we're still working forward on the pump station, um, working with a couple reps right now, trying to find a pump that can pump from low flow here to really high flows, and trying to find something in there, and the answer I got from one of the reps was, I'm not authorized to work with that kind of pumping head, you know, I can't just give you a pump, you know, based on that, I'll have to run it through the manufacturer, so we're waiting here back there to see. We're trying to find something that can, compared to the last meeting, the, the flows that we're looking at when it rains, how high it goes up, we're trying to find something that can, that can pump.
Total dynamic here?
Uh, we're, depending on the force main size, we're trying to stay around a ten inch to keep the cost down, but we're looking upwards of over two hundred foot of TDA, so we're talking right there at the pump station. So, it's, you know, it's kind of the trade-off, we're trying to find something that can do that because then at the lower flows it operates a lot better, which is more normal, you know, it's during an average day, we want it to, to run and be efficient, and when the high flows come in, we want it to be able to handle it, but, you know, we don't want to put in these huge pumps that can just pump that and then you're pumping low flows and it's just cycling every five minutes and just turning on and off all day, that just eats up in energy costs, so we're trying to find something that's a good, happy balance there, so. We're working on that and, um, you know, we're getting my surveyors moving forward on, starting to look at the easements for the force main part, see what owners have changed in the past couple, few years. I know we did have a plus happen there over in Greenland, they, they purchased quite a bit of land by the river and we've been in discussions with them on, on, they're, they're aware that we need an easement through there and I think they're very receptive to it, so that's gonna help. That was a big tract of land that, with an owner that I think we're a little worried about trying to get easements from, so that, that, that's one off the list, I think we can, you know, leave several others, but doing that and then something, I haven't had to talk to you about this, but, um, I'm gonna start looking at doing some, we need to go punch some holes in the ground along our alignment, do some rock soundings, I call it, just get our drillers out there, various portions along alignment to see, probe where the rock is, especially like creek crossings and whatnot, that'll help when we bid the job out, contractor will know what they're getting into, if, if they got a bore under a creek or something, if they're gonna hit hard rock, they, they like to know, if they don't know, they'll price it high, so, um, we do have that in our engineering budget and we'll stick in that budget, but I'm gonna try to get our guys out there in the next month or two to do that, so I'll coordinate with property owners too, let, let, let us have access out to their fields and whatnot, so hopefully they'll be, well, I'll work with Isaac on which owners we wanna approach with that too. We'll be, we'll be a little selective there, so, don't want to get anyone too stirred up, so. Still moving forward there, we've been, um, working with, um, with the state too, with ADQ, you know, with the wastewater plant, looking at doing some things in the near future, maybe some minor, not, not high-cost things, but just, you know, they, they want us to keep the plant running until we're connected to Fayetteville, so we're, there's a few things that we're, we're looking at there with the ponds to try to keep things as efficient as possible, just to get, bridge that gap there, so. ADQ's been, been working with us and, um, we've been taking a proactive approach with them, which I'm finding is a better than reactive when they come slap you on the wrist, so. Anyways, um, y'all have any questions?
So, one thing I don't think council members are aware of, but we did have someone, uh, who is apparently watching the Dyke Creek Bridge, uh, project very close, um, they, they called, contacted us, uh, and contacted the news about sewer discharge into the river. We do discharge sewer into the river and we have for fifty years. It, it's been treated by the time it gets there, but, uh, apparently, uh, instead of contacting us, somebody wanted to make a story out of it, went to the news, uh, I think Nick, I think you went down there with Isaac.
Yeah, we went down, looked at it and, and responded to the news, their, their email and.
And it never did, it never did go anywhere from there, but just in case you guys do hear something about it, that's something the city's very aware of, and that everything that gets there, um, I shouldn't say that, um, the idea, as it gets there, it's treated. Now, we have, when it floods there, I think we do have some, some overflow.
Well, every, everything that, that comes to that outfall has gone through the treatment plant.
Treatment.
It has gone through it, yeah, so it's, that's one thing Isaac and his folks have done a great job doing is no matter how much it rains, they, they pump and store and do everything they can. Where, I know there's other communities that can't do that and it overflows ponds straight in the river, I mean, they, they push every bit through that treatment plant that comes to them, so it's, they've done a great job there, and, um, like I said, we're, we're looking at some things too, just with the way the original plant was designed, being there forty-plus years, there's just, you know, some things I think we can, we can do some slight modifications to help things get even better and just hopefully keep those kind of issues from, from coming back around, you know, as I said, we're.
And part of the reason that came up was the river is, for one thing, is dried up and then I think down there at the, the bridge, they, they cored a big channel to, to reduce the size of the river, and so where this is running out, it's, it's not really running out into the water, it was kind of running out into its own little puddle there, and so I think maybe that was part of the reason.
Yeah, summertime, I know, I know every summer, I think, the, that you'll get complaints when the river's down and the flow's down, it's just, I mean, everywhere they, they have that issue and, you know, it's, it's gotta take a longer path to get down to the river, it's, it's visible there and it just takes someone that wants to stir things up to, to make a phone call, so luckily it, it stopped there and it didn't hurt anything else, so.
So, if you do get any calls on that, please direct them to Isaac, he, he's fully aware of it and he's fully capable of explaining what is going on. Like I said, he and Nick explained it to the news and they didn't, they didn't feel like making a story out of it, so. Yes, we are, we are in full compliance with everything down there, and the state is very much involved in what's going on at that sewer plant right now. Due to the fact that we're trying to, to get, uh, hook up the Fayetteville, so.
Well, I do know with all the new bridge stuff that's going in there, no dams keeping water back, that hedges really low. The water flows very well through there, so there's not a lot of water.
Yeah.
On either side, yeah.
Any other questions for Nick? Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank y'all.
Parks Director Harris.
There y'all. Have you missed me?
Yeah.
Don't worry, I won't try to make up for the last three months on report. Uh, I'll start with the, the baseball and softball season, it was, uh, really probably the most efficient and best one that, that I've ran since, um, since I've been here, it went really well. No major issues at all. You always have complaints, but they were, they were less than normal and a lot more minimal, uh, that's having Sarah helped a lot, she was, she was very, very good help during the season as far as everything, field work and, and other, other things, and, uh, good group of coaches, good umpires, good parents, it just, it was a good season. We had great end-of-the-season tournaments, uh, they were real successful, some of our biggest gate fees that we've had and with the similar amount of tournaments there, so that went well, and All-Star Tournament that we helped, uh, put on as a league in Farmington went, went really well as, as well, so it was a good season, so. And then the Fourth of July event was very successful, uh, it was, it was, again, probably, it was by far the most efficient and, and successful since, since I've started doing this, which it was my fifth one, by the way, my fourth year, but my fifth event.
Yeah, that's official, he just, he just met his, uh, four-year anniversary.
I started July third, uh, on that day of the event, uh, four years ago, so.
Same feels like.
End stage.
It does, you're right, I'm still here, yeah, still growing strong, so. It was great, I hate to even start thinking people, 'cause I know I'm gonna leave someone off, but I do, the, the police and fire department were great. The, the parking, the fire department just jumped in, helping, helping the Boy Scouts and, and just made it very efficient, getting them in there, which helped, make it more efficient to get them out, and, uh, police department as well, getting them out of there and directing traffic, it, it was great. I, I was shocked how fast they got out of there, really. And, and other work, uh, they helped in other areas too, the fire department helped, uh, in preparations as well. Isaac and his guys, uh, helped with some, his crew helped with, uh, preparations as well and doing stuff, and of course, we had several council members down there serving food and doing other things, uh, city employees, Christie, uh, so it, it was definitely a community effort, a city-wide effort, um, churches, both Unity and, and First Baptist had several volunteers down there as well and did a great job. And my Parks Committee, they jumped in, they did a lot of work as well, getting ready, set up, cooking, we, we cooked early, as y'all, some of y'all know that served and that went, Misty and Kira kind of spearheaded the, the inside of the concession and, and Carrie, Larson, and got it all organized and had a great plan going in and, and, um, so the food part went much better than in the past. I don't have exact numbers, 'cause based on what we didn't give away, it looks like we, we fed somewhere twenty-two-five and twenty-six-hundred people, I, we didn't think that'd be people, but that's how much stuff we, we gave away, um, so that's a lot, there was a lot of people there, it was a good event. I know I'm probably forgetting somebody, but it, it was, it was a good event, it really was, I think everyone enjoyed it. The weather turned out, the rain clouds come in, looked like it was gonna rain on us, but it didn't, it cooled things off and, and it was good. So, I wanna thank all those people because it, it takes them all to put on something like that. Fireworks was really, really good again this year, uh, as well as the music and the other activities, so. So um, and then um, let's see what else. Riverside Park has been better. It's still pretty trash on Mondays. So if you wanna see what it's like, come on down on Monday morning. Help us pick up trash. But it has been better. We, we don't have near the issues. Even, even when it was busy, I think John would agree. It wasn't, wasn't as bad. I think some of the banners helped, some of the increased patrol that they've done. Presence down there has helped. We, we. Isaac's uh, crew brought in some rocks and blocks in places that they are not supposed to be parked. And we added some parking spots and some extra striping. So that's, that's helped as well. Uh, to control the, where people park a little bit better and they're not just in there everywhere. There's still alcohol down there, but it's, you know, when I pick up the trash, it's not near as prevalent as it was before. It's not near as much down there, uh, for sure. So Riverside has, has been a little bit better this year. I would say probably a lot better than you're going in, in the past anyway. Uh, I just don't understand why they can't pick their trash up themselves. But I don't mind empty cans, but I sure hate picking up all the trash on the ground. But uh, so now we're just, we're gearing up for football, our fall football season. And then as well, we're looking into some options and maybe doing some, some fall programs for baseball and softball down there as well. Um, and just trying to keep them at grass mowed and the, and the parks in good shape is what we're working on right now. So. I think that's all I've got. Uh, but again, thanks to everyone that, that helped. Uh, it was, it was an awesome Fourth of July there.
Thank you. You did a great job, Charlie.
Thanks. Uh, it gets, I told Christie I feel like I'm forgetting something, cause it, it, I've done it. It's kinda, it's, it goes smooth. So it makes me reading up. And I'm like, I know I forgot something. This has been too easy. But it wasn't easy, don't get me wrong. But uh, we've kinda got it down to the science now. And we change something a little bit each year. It makes it, I think, a little bit more efficient, a little bit better for everybody. But, but for the most part, the major stuff is, is the same. And we say, I, I was turning volunteers away. I mean, they were like, what can we do? And I was like, well, go check with concession to see if any of them need a break. And most of them wouldn't leave. They were in there. So um, you know, and they're staying, help pick up trash, which was excellent. Um, and I will, I do need to thank Rex Smith. Every, I go down there the next day on the fourth usually. Um, and every year he's down there picking up trash when I get there. So him and Tracy Rizley both were down there this year. And, and they, they picked up a lot less. Our, our people that went around picking up trash afterwards did a great job as well. Cause they didn't pick up near as much. But Rex always goes down after, down there. He beats me down there. But he's always there picking up trash when I get there, just about every, every July fourth. So. Um, so anyway, that's about it. Any questions other than budget right now?
No questions for Chad? Any budget questions for Chad? Make it a skate by Chad.
Really? Sit down there.
We know it's that easy. We went budget.
He was stalling, wasn't he?
I'd encourage everybody to attend fire meeting every now and then if you like. And especially when they cook, it's really good when they do that. So. I lost my, washed my original mode, so I hope I didn't forget anything. Um, attended the fire chief conference in Hot Springs. Very good conference to go to. Uh, had a lot of new equipment to look at. Had, you know, a few good workplaces to go to. Chad said helping him get ready for the Fourth of July. Um, we didn't have any incidents that we know of in our areas currently. Um, lucked out a lot of places in town, or in the county. Had trees on fire and things. We didn't have any issue. So it was great. Didn't have any issues down at the park. Nobody hurt. Couple of Band-Aids here and there. Um, we did a pretty busy month. We ended up with eighty-four calls last month compared to sixty-three is what we normally ran for the, for the month of June. But wow, who knows? Um, we did end up having twenty-two of those calls in Greenland, which was kinda odd. Normally they're six to ten a month. For some reason, they're twenty-two. Um, they finally got their money's worth for a month. So other than that, um, budget wise, um, overage. There's a few things we need to get fixed that we didn't plan on fixing. Had pumps, a couple of pump issues. One of our deck guns was leaking on the fire truck. You know, just had some air pack issues. And we don't have the specialized high pressure equipment to work on those. So always have to hire somebody else to do it. But other than that, um, everything going like normal.
Any questions for Chief Mike?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Um, so on the bottom of your, the regular report that I sent out, I did a um, semi annual report for you. Um, shows that our bank balances uh, for the year have been increased by a hundred and fifty-four thousand. Um, our sales tax, um, I showed a comparison there for, for this year versus the first six months of last year. Um, we've had an increase of seventy-seven thousand on that. Um, and then each of the department's uh, overall budget numbers are on there. And of course, John's is not correct on here, but kids would've been correct when the other took it off. So that's still a, a good bottom line number there. Uh, showing that we're a hundred and thirty-seven thousand under budget for the year so far.
So keep that page, uh, is it that page? No. It's the next page of your report, cause we'll be talking about that. Eight thousand dollars, city works fee momentarily. That is the end of our business reports and we can move on to big business. Uh, we have two ordinances. Uh, ordinance four seventy-four, ending chapter two, Westport code, pop with was chapter two. Alright. And uh, chapter eleven, which is uh, building, building. So before we, before we move into those, uh, we'd like to motion to read these ordinances. My time is only, that's maybe one more. Does anyone? Motion second. All those in favor, do we do that?
Yes.
Misty Cottle?
Yes.
Anita Lowery?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throggord?
Yes, sir.
John Collins?
Yes.
Kira Hungate?
Yes.
Don Rollins?
Yes.
Joe Tover?
Yes.
First one, Mayor, is that ordinance forty-four, see Westport, Washington, ordinance two, made title two. Classification administration personnel to see Westport, office, office, ordinance in its entirety. So there's a title, keyword, motion, do pass.
We're going on that. Any questions about that? What we're changing there is some stuff we talked about in prior meetings. Do we have a motion?
Would you point out the cha, the one change that I told you about, or would you like me to?
Go ahead, cause I forgot what it was.
Oh, okay. On the uh, two point uh, oh eight, point oh two, the ward boundaries.
Oh, yes.
Um.
Sorry.
It's alright. The uh, point oh two, the ward boundaries, that section there is actually wording from the original ordinance in nineteen eighty-six. Uh, when they redid the ordinance in, I think it was two thousand and eleven, they added the oh one, the point oh one. And didn't remove the old part from the classification. So I have uh, removed that ward boundaries and attached a copy of the actual current map to that in what's the official ordinance. So it's not when you guys have in your packet. So that has been corrected.
So does it act, I did have a question. So are we all in the same words? Did this change anybody's?
No.
No.
No, it did not. This, the information that's on there is, was not current either.
This paper did not match the map. The map is correct. This is not like that.
Right.
Cause I caught that and I called and said, what's up?
I know. Yeah.
But no, nothing's changed.
So any questions regarding ordinance four seventy-four? Motion four seventy-four. You made a motion?
Yes, sir.
Second? Second? Motion is second.
We do real call on that. I'm afraid so, yes, sir.
Misty Cottle?
Yes.
Anita Lowery?
Yes.
Jeff Upton, yes. Jan Throggord?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Kira Hungate?
Yes.
Don Rollins?
Yes.
Joe Tover?
Yes.
Any motion carries?
There's no emergency clause in that one. Mayor, so that one's finished. The next one is an ordinance to amend title eleven buildings in construction. Let's see, Westport office office, because ordinance is, of course, in its entirety, declared emergency and for other purposes. So keyword motion, do pass on that. Mayor, you did, uh, pass that one. We'll discuss it.
Well, second.
Okay.
First we do pass. So is there any discussion on ordinance four seventy-five? You guys all have a chance to read through that building code?
Pete's good.
Yeah, there's a couple of things in there we, we discussed here as a group, uh, on a couple of occasions. Uh, one thing in particular is, uh, in this new code, we, we can, uh, we, we have addressed uh, strip mining or, or clear cutting. Uh, the city does have some teeth in, in that now. So that was one of the things that, uh, was in uh, chapter eleven. Couple of the other things I think you probably noticed, we're, we're adopting uh, state fire code as, as you know, part of our fire code. We're um, adopting in several of the state building codes, HVAC, that type of thing. We are regulating who can come in and do uh, HVAC work uh, for someone else. If you wanna do your own work, be free to do so. But um, in order to come in to do work, you can have to be a licensed ASVAC technician. We're requiring uh, some, some certification on builders before they start doing work for other people, uh, all three standard stuff. Questions? So one thing is, as everybody's aware of this, you don't get yourself in trouble. Like the mayor has, um, any building project that is not movable, you need a building permit for prior to start. Everyone know that. You guys all. I have a building permit. Any questions on this? No? Do we have a motion? Motion is second. Real call. Misty Cottle?
Yes.
Anita Lowery?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throggord?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Kira Hungate?
Yes.
Don Rollins?
Yes.
Joe Tover?
Yes.
Any motion carries? So next, um.
There's a few of these things, Mayor, that we wanna put to effect right away and not leave in publication time. So there is emergency clause on this one, which requires a separate motion as separate voice spoken.
The regulation may accept the emergency clause. Has weird.
Motion is second. Misty Cottle?
Yes.
Anita Lowery?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
John, Jan Throggord?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Kira Hungate?
Yes.
Don Rollins?
Yes.
Joe Tover?
Yes.
So carries. Alright. So next is that um, eight thousand dollar uh, bank balance. Look at your packet, uh, under the treasury report. Uh, we have that in the summary for all of those uh, building projects. Everyone know what should go on. So it's uh, it's right after the fire report. So Christie, you can correct me if I get off the course here, but we have eight thousand dollars left in that account. After we completed everything at the city administration building. Uh, so one, that's great. Giving, giving it a budget. We have, uh, plenty of that open in the account. Now the question is, what do we do with the money? We can take that money, we can pay it on the loan. Okay? Cause that, that building was done on the loan. Right? So we have that option. Uh, we also have the option, we can keep that, um, set it aside in case we need uh, money for some of these other projects. We know that, uh, you know, some of the things that, I guess that pop up are some of the uh, the IT work that needs to be done. Uh, some furniture, that type of thing. There's, there's some of that that we can, we can guess that there's gonna be something that isn't accounted for. So uh, basically, want the council's input on what you think we should do with this money to do. Pay that back on the loan? You want us to hold it in reserve for uh, the potential use on uh, one or all of these other building projects? Well, given that one of them is this building, it's a renovation and we were talking about masonry. Uh, on ceiling tiles, if for nothing else, an eight thousand dollar contingency. Or any kind of uh, do there rest any pinpoint issues? I don't think there'll be real problems. Or do you exceed them through the ceiling tile? Contingency never hurts when you're renovating a building. Any other thoughts or discussions? Second? Motion is second. All of the favors say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All of the posts say no? Motion carries. I think that's a good idea. Uh, we, we can pay that back on the loan at the end of the building projects. Last item in our business is the resignation of our city clerk. So we've spoken with the city attorney, uh, who recommended that we get the last page of our packet, the very back page. In which Marsha is appointed Christie as the deputy clerk. The reason for that is we need someone, the city clerk has to sign certain forms. And so we need someone as city clerk in that, that, in the interim period now. We currently have one person who has uh, collected the paperwork to get signatures and run for the position of city clerk. Much like uh, when we uh, appointed Don as interim mayor. So that we did not influence uh, the voters by putting someone in that position. So just wanna get that out there. And I don't wanna appoint you to that until there's time. Let me see if anyone else is, uh, we don't wanna give that very bad chance to someone. Uh, but, so in the interim, we'd like to designate Christie to carry on that duty. You have to sign uh, for the clerk in those areas where they need to. Any questions about that? Right, and she sits in, so. Do we have a motion?
We do.
Have a second? Motion is second. All of the favors say yes?
Yes.
All the posts say no? Motion carries. So for mayor's comments, um.
With regrets, of course. We would, we would wanna accept that resignation.
Okay.
And uh, we can do it with gratitude for the service. We would have to do that, but I think we would be wise to have a motion to accept the resignation.
No motion? Second? And a second? All of the favors say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed say no? Motion carries. So um, we've talked about the Fourth of July. And I just wanted to point out Chad, uh, Chief, Chief, uh, everybody that participated. Thank you so much. It, it was great. Um, and I wanted to especially send a thank you out to the spouses, uh, and the family and the friends that were down there. So I know, uh, many of us were there, but what, what really meant something to me, not that everyone else's volunteering didn't. But uh, I saw Rod. but uh, I saw Rodney down there picking up trash. Uh, you know, there were several people there whose spouse came down and, and was just picking it up. We know that, that our uh, city employees, our department heads have a real heart for the city. We see that in, in, in the work they do and stuff. But when you see the spouses down there, uh, or, or family or friends down there helping, it just, uh, it says a lot for the community that we have in Westport. That was, that was really special and powerful to me to, to see those people that didn't really have a dog in the fight and they're down there working. Uh, you know, whether it's, it's cooking or picking up trash or whatever they were doing, it was, uh, that was good to see. Your kids were down there running around with trash bags. So, um, I was, I was real happy about that. Also wanted to inquire about West Vass, see where we're at there, see if we can get a, an update maybe the next, next meeting.
Next meeting.
I don't know if I worked that. I know I put you on the spot. I think that's all I had. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion is second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed say no. Thank you, guys. Walter, when's your next meeting?
Uh, this is coming third, uh, third Thursday. So whatever.